Welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Walk off please.
Brewster.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Ewer. Bennett.
Here.
Barton.
Here.
Crown.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
All right, the application tonight will be given by David Better from West Hazel Baptist Church. Welcome.
Let's pray together. Our Father God, this is such a beautiful season of the year, and this fall is especially beautiful because of the abundance of rain that you've provided for us, and we're very grateful for that. The grass and the trees and the flowers are all so beautiful, and they remind us of the beauty of your great love for us. Give us the eyes to see your love, Father. Help us not to miss the evidences of your great love that exist all around us. Father, I pray that you will enable us to see your love in the way that we interact with one another in this community. Father, we're thankful for this year's Fall Festival. We thank you for the ways that it benefits our community. And Father, we pray that this year's Fall Festival will bring us together as a community and give us opportunities to love one another in the way you want us to. Father God, we pray especially tonight for the leaders of our community, for the mayor and the members of this city council. Father, we thank you that they love our community enough to work hard to make our community a better place in which to live. We pray that you will bless them for all that they do. Tonight, Father, we pray that you will fill their hearts with your love, direct their hearts by your love, so that the decisions that they make will be the decisions that you want them to make. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the presentation and approval of minutes, eight minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty five. That from better?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion or corrections? All right, great. Call please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next we have item one, public comment. That's a couple people to come to tonight's meeting. Brandy Bailey with the Cedric County Treasurer's Office talked about the tag office along with Commissioner Jeff Blueball and Susie Sutton. So, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Brandy Bailey. I'm the county treasurer, and I just came to talk to you tonight a little bit about what we have going on here at Hayesville in your city hall. So I've been working with mayor for probably now almost a year, trying to figure out how we could get a satellite location down here. Just because of the timing of everything, I wasn't sure how things were going to play out with the closing down of Kellogg Tag Office and how that was gonna, the timing of all that. But it worked out that about the time we closed on Friday, and then today, Hayesville, we opened up a satellite tag location here in Hayesville City Hall. It's open up to any residents in Cedric County, not necessarily just Hayesville, but hopefully it'll serve us a lot of Hayesville residents. The location is going to be open on Monday through Friday from eight to five, but our last appointment we'll see at four o'clock. It gives our clerk time to do the potentially thirty minutes for a title work and then to close out for the day and be gone and out of here before the building closes. And then on Friday, we're open from eight till eleven, since your guys' city hall closes at noon, our last appointment we'll see that day is eleven o'clock, and then we'll be out here by the time you guys close city hall at noon. So I appreciate the partnership and you guys allowing us the opportunity to be here. I think it's just a win-win situation for both of us, and yeah, and with that, I'll stand for any questions. I know we have a lot going on, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I do appreciate being here tonight, and you know, the window's right across, it's the first window right there. So, yeah, definitely appreciate Tag Office being here. I know it took a while to happen, but you have to, you know, get all the, you know, cuts in a row and get the right permissions and so. Any council members have any questions?
I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. And we will see probably between twenty to twenty-five customers a day, depending on, you know, what type of service they have, and but for the most part, we'll probably, we'll see about twenty people a day, so.
Yeah, I saw several out there this morning, so.
Well, and then don't be surprised if media does show up. They, since they've learned that Hayesville is the newest satellite location, I was doing an interview this afternoon, and I was like, oh yeah, I forgot Hayesville opened today. I haven't even checked on that office yet. And they're like, well, maybe we'll go down there and check on it, so you'll probably see some of that happening for the next, you know, week or so, but.
Cool. Can I buy anything?
Well, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Commissioner Jeff Blueball. County update.
Welcome. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys today. Just wanted to go through a little bit of an update here. What do I gotta do to kick this? There we go. Just wanted to present a little bit about Commission District. The Commission District is basically, it's west of Mulvane, goes all the way to Delano, then back around Douglas, goes out to where I live, out at one hundred and nineteenth and Kellogg, then back down through Clearwater. So it's a pretty large district, pretty large area, but Clearwater is a large area of that, so I wanted to make sure that I got there and keep you guys updated. I've spent a lot more time on your side of things than I have as a commissioner. This is my first year as a commissioner, but I was on Wichita City Council for eleven years, so I probably understand council business a lot better than I do commission business. So the roles of the county government, we have forty-one departments. We're basically an arm of the state government, so we do everything from elections, property assessment, collection of taxes. Public safety is a big one for the county, human resources or human services, public health, coroner, emergency management. And then some of the county services that are not state mandated that we oversee EMS and the Office of the Medical Director, nine-one-one emergency communication, Fire District One, Metropolitan Area Building Construction, the Planning Department. And those, we do work with the City of Wichita as well, and Regional Forensic Science Center, Public Works. And then some of the roles, administrative functions, finance, economic development partners, and then ancillary functions, Intrust Bank Arena, Exploration Place, Cedric County Zoo, and then Cedric County Parks and Extension. So our twenty twenty-six adopted budget was six hundred and twenty-two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So property tax rates are twenty-seven point three. We had a reduction of the mill from twenty-eight, seven oh one to twenty-seven, five-five-three. It was like one point one, one point two mills. It was one of the largest reductions you've seen, but if you guys understand the mill levy reductions, it's really not as large amount as what you think. I mean, maybe it's twelve, thirteen dollars on your tax bill, but every little bit counts, and it's better than it going up. If you look at our spend for the county, right there, thirty-nine percent of our total budget, two hundred and twenty-nine million, almost two hundred and thirty million, is public safety. And it was the same thing when I was on the Wichita City Council. Public safety is always going to be one of your largest expenses, whether it's city or county. Revenues, two hundred and twenty-six million was property taxes is our largest revenue source with charges for services coming in second at a hundred and forty million. And if you look at percentage of budget paid by property taxes, majority of it, it's going to be right there. Department of Corrections is the jail, it's the large sheriff's office, EMS, the fire district, a lot of those are going to be around public safety. Some of the upcoming capital projects, the Calm Care Crisis Center they're building downtown, relocating the election office, the State Mental Health Hospital that's here in our district, Juvenile Services Building, Main Courthouse. That's one of the biggest eye openers that I had in the transition come from the county to the city is the county has a lot of real estate. I mean, it's all over the place. So the more we can do to make sure we're making lean and efficient decisions with whether it's maintaining, building, whatever we're doing with our real estate. And then some of the potential projects, we're looking at this emergency preparedness center, an overall calm care complex where we put everything on one location, and then Health Department space merged to KU Medical Center. Some of the good news, we've got our triple A bond rating so that we get great interest rates. That helps us out a lot. Our mill levy comparison, we're second lowest in the metro county in Kansas. And then, you know, our staffing, prior to me getting there and still now, we're really focused on staffing. The county had the same challenges that we did in Wichita City Council, whether it's police or fire, we're all kind of fighting each other for personnel. As soon as we get a police officer certified, one of the suburbs is trying to get them, the same thing with the sheriff. So hopefully, we're getting everybody salaries that are kind of even-kill, so we're not losing staff. Some of our challenges is the cost of criminal justice system. I don't know if you guys have seen some of this two million dollar cut that we're looking at right now from the state. And that decision was made in Johnson County with no one from Cedric County having any say in it whatsoever. We get forty percent of the individuals that, and a lot of them aren't even from Cedric County, they put them here because we have, we have more resources for people getting out, but they're not from here. And it creates a lot of challenges for us, and it creates a lot of challenges from our tax base. So whenever there was no cut off the top and just cutting us two million dollars, we did a press conference on that, and we're, we've got it high on our legislative agenda, so we're trying to draw a lot of attention to that. Just inflation overall on core services, property tax pressures, nine percent median residential increase. I don't know if you guys have seen any of the stuff that I'm doing on my own. I'm challenging the valuation system. I've been a real estate broker for twenty-five years, and I don't see consistency. I don't think we're hitting it on the valuations. I actually testified, the Senate Taxation Committee asked me yesterday to testify on that, and I testified in front of them about the inconsistencies. One of the other people that testified, you see these jumpstart gas stations, they're in several different counties, and they spoke about the inconsistencies about how their gas stations are evaluated in one county to the next. So we've got to do a better job with valuations, you know, we've got a budget to set, but at the same time, we've got to have realistic valuations that reflect a real sales price. And rising, rising tax, I kind of talked about that, the nine percent average leads to higher taxes despite, even though we did the mill levy decrease, we're still bringing in a lot more taxes because of those higher valuations. Middle Health Milestones, the groundbreaking of a middle health hospital, and they did that in October. I think that's supposed to be done late next year. And then this corrections crunch, I kind of talked about a little bit, but two, two point one million dollars in cuts. Admin, the county is going forth with a purchase of the Envision Building that's right there across from City Hall. So we're currently renting space in the Ruffin Building. We've been doing that with ARPA money for about the last five years. So as that runs out, we're going to be moving into that building and kind of have a central government aisle between the City of Wichita and Cedric County. Talked a little bit about the Ruffin Building, the Envision Building. Our due diligence has ended, but we're proceeding forward with that. Brandy, appreciate you giving us the Tag Office update, and I've really tried to highlight, and I appreciate you guys opening your doors and allowing us to have a satellite office here because it's very important to folks in this district. And a lot of people have called me. I told them, hey, just come down here and try to beat the crowds because as Brandy's updates us, you know, there are a couple hundred people out there before seven AM, and it doesn't do anybody any good. It just bogs down the system for the day. And then I'd like to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions for Commissioner Blueball? Gussel Thompson?
Okay, if you guys ever have certain, have questions for me, reach out to me anytime you ever want me to come back again, please let me know.
I'm too lazy to email.
That's okay.
In the past, the county has given out coupons for bulk trash. Do you think they'll bring that back?
I don't know about the bulk trash, but I think we just noticed the mattresses. We came out with that. So you guys know that we got the dump station?
Yes.
Open back up down here. That was something I really pushed because I was getting a lot of feedback on that. I know some folks don't like it because they're using Seventy-first Street, and I know originally they said they were going to go up north, but they're hauling all that to Plumthicket in Harper County. It just doesn't make sense to reroute it any other way, but I think that helps us a lot with the dumping. You guys probably seen the, it's on Hayesville Happenings or something where somebody dumped like four porcelain toilets in the middle of the road down south here. I mean, that's pretty dangerous if you come up and hit those porcelain toilets in the middle of night, right in the middle of the roads, so.
Unless you see mattresses alongside the road, and that mattress coupon dumping will help because that's like twenty-five dollars a mattress. I know you can do up to two mattresses, so that should help out.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
I saw what they have to haul to the north end. They can't use it down here.
Well, thank you for coming. Next we have item C, Susie Sutton, talked about the Cedric County Fire District Number One Steering Council. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm supposed to have a slide. I'll get my cheat sheet.
The slide is also in the council.
There you go.
There you go. It's also in the council packet.
Okay, you have it in front of you? Okay. My old eyes can't read this. Well, if you were reading his presentation as he went through it, he stole my thunder on my first item. We have, in twenty twenty-four, the steering committee was working with the fire district, and on their budget, we had put in place a plan to reduce the mill levies for the Cedric County Fire District. And we have stayed on course with that, and so this year we reduced it another quarter percent, and so we're at sixteen point seven five. And when we started, we were at seventeen point eight. So I wanted to start out with that, so. Then the next item we have is while we're staying on this budget of reducing mill levy, we are still able to buy the equipment we need. We received a quint truck a couple weeks ago. It's about to be put into service. The mechanic's finishing up, putting the items on it that are unique to Cedric County. And then we will receive three new engines about the end of the month, and then they will be put in service. And then we have a heavy rescue truck on order, and that should be delivered next year. Another equipment purchase we have is some new compressors. We'll have a new compressor in every station right now. We have one very large compressor at one station, and they spend every Monday, one person will spend every Monday going and taking all their air units from each station, filling them up, and then going and delivering them back to each station. So it was decided that each station needed their own compressor. Then some exciting news. I'm sure most of you saw in the news in July that Violet joined the fire department. She is a search and rescue dog. And we already had Benny, but he's going to be retiring in two thousand twenty-six, so we needed another search and rescue dog. But also, it hasn't made the news that Latitude just joined the department about a month ago. He is a specially trained dog for Accelerance. He's trained by the ATF. And what makes him so special is the ATF was going to start this training class. There are normally sixteen positions, and this class was only going to have eight. They called up Cedric County and said, we have this class of eight starting. It's going to be our last class for a few years because of budget cuts. Do you want a position in this class? Because of some history with Cedric County and the reputation that we had with the training and our past with them, they actually called us and asked if we wanted a position. So I think that says a lot for their reputation and their prior experience with them. And so I thought that was, you know, very exciting that they actually got one of the last positions for we don't know how long. And ATF is the only place that you can get training for accelerant and explosive dogs. So, and then I guess a item that we were wanting information on is a item that we are beginning to work on is with the district is there are nine stations that are part of Cedric County Fire District One. Those are the fully staffed, paid stations, or paid position stations. And within the district, there are, or within Cedric County, there are other stations in cities like Derby that have paid fire departments. Then there are other communities, mostly smaller towns or townships, that have fire departments that are volunteer or part-time that have some paid positions that we have contracts with, that Cedric County has contracts with, in Wichita also, to provide aid when they need assistance. And what we're in the process of doing is trying to consolidate and have them come into the Fire District One. The reason is, is because when we are going into these places, these townships or cities to provide aid, we are coming across the situations that they call us for aid, so we go in the situation to provide aid. We don't go in as we are providing all the service. So we expect to come across the fire, and them already have personnel and equipment there. We're getting there, and they're not, they don't have the personnel. They don't have the equipment there. And so we're going in there short-staffed, and that puts our personnel at risk. That puts this home at risk because now they're not getting the right service. They might have people at risk because we get there, we don't have the staff to go in. Or if they're, they know there's people in, our staff, our personnel are going to put themselves at risk if they know people are in there because they're not going to let a life be in jeopardy. So we are going, we are trying to get contracts now with these cities and townships, and really between them all, there's eleven, to have them join the district. There's a lot of others, things that are pieces to the puzzle of why this needs to happen, but the two primary ones are we do not want to continue to put our personnel at risk and then, or our citizens, because for instance, if Clearwater has a call and we send units from Hayesville to Clearwater to assist them, then Clearwater is not short. And so then if your house catches on fire, Clearwater or Hayesville will not have full staff to come put your fire out. Yes, we will call for aid back up from Wichita Derby, but that'll take another ten or fifteen minutes to get that back up. So that is the thing we are working on, and we've just started, and we're starting with the meetings, and evidently the county commissioner had a meeting today regarding that. Now, the last thing I wanted to go over was more positive and exciting news, was our new training facility. For the last, I would say, six to eight months, we've been talking about this, and they came up with the county commissioners and, well, Wichita has one already, so why don't we join forces and use their facility? Well, theirs is not big enough. And so then, well, they can make it bigger. They've got land. Then we'd have to buy the land. That's about two million dollars. We give, we have an offer from a Wichita resident, or I guess it's outside Wichita, a resident to give us land that we would need, next to the fire station that is on South Oliver. So we can get free land and not have to spend two million dollars. And so with several months of conversations and discussions and everything, we are going, we've decided to build the facility next to the South Oliver Station. And they have a special fund. It's not going to come out of the budget, and they've had the special fund that's been growing, and so they're going to use these funds. Currently, they have been using some classrooms that are in the basement of the Bel Air Fire Station that has mold growing and is dark and dank, and I wouldn't want to be in there for an hour, and they have to do all their classroom sessions there. To do the outdoor sessions, they have to either go to use Wichita as a first training, they go to Newton, they go to Hutchison. We do not have an outside training facility. So we're proceeding with building this training facility. It will have everything they need. It'll have classrooms. It will have the outdoor training they need, and. and it's really exciting to have the new facility that they deserve. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. Thirty questions for Susie. I see. Thank you for coming and presenting your updates on the Steering Committee.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for coming and presenting your updates from the Steering Committee.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to Item Two, Approval of Licenses and Bonds. We have none tonight. Item Three, Introduction of Ordinances and Resolutions. A Resolution of the City of Hazel, Kansas, authorizing a conditional use to prevent the construction and operation of an accessory apartment on Lot Thirty-nine, Block Two, wards fourth addition, Hazel, Cedric County, Kansas. Caleb, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a conditional use request for an accessory apartment in the backyard of Two-O-three West Sunflower Drive. The permit was jointly requested with a variance from the minimum size of the dwelling in SF Single Family District, and that was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of this conditional use at the September twenty-fifth meeting, subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report, and those conditions are as follows. Any access pathway to the accessory apartment located in the side or rear yards must have a sight obscuring screening of not less than six feet in height between the access pathway and any abutting residential property. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have, and I can stand for them as well.
Does anybody have any questions for Caleb? Councilmember Walters?
I don't have any questions. I make motion to approve this resolution before I complete this. I just want to say, my son lives in California. There are multiple backhouses out there, and it's very common. So that's what I see here. I think it's a good idea, it's a way to help the citizenry, citizenship. So, I make motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve this resolution as presented. Any questions? Councilmember Ward?
I just had one question. I was trying to read the, through the Planning Commission. There was no, there was no issues with the neighbors on either side with putting it there? I mean, I don't see that there would be, but you know.
There was no public comment at the public hearing. Paige, the applicant, could speak to how neighbors feel about it, if you'd like.
I was just curious as to...
My neighbors are all awesome, and they're really supportive, and they've offered to help out.
Okay, that's awesome, that's good.
Any other discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item, Item B, An Ordinance Denying a Request for Rezoning of Certain Real Property Located Within the City of Hazel, Kansas.
So the Planning Commission initially reviewed this zone change at the property sixty-four oh-one, South Sunnyside Road, at the August twenty-eighth meeting. And during that meeting, there were several neighborhoods, or neighbors, from the surrounding neighborhood that spoke in opposition to that zone change, and their concerns are in the memo. After this, the discussion, the Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval of the zone change to TF-two family instead of MF-four, multi-family four. That motion failed with a vote of two in favor and three opposed. According to state statute, when a planning commission fails to make a recommendation on a zone change, the default recommendation is denial, and that default recommendation can be forwarded to city council. But our city code states that sixty days have to pass in between the end of a public hearing and before it is presented to city council. So because no other motion was made, the zone change remained as old business on the Planning Commission agenda, and was reviewed a second time on September twenty-fifth. So the Planning Commission was given two options. The first, to table the item and wait out the sixty days for the default recommendation of denial, or to make and pass a new motion to recommend approval or denial. They ultimately made a motion for denial, but failed to state any rationale for that denial. So we are recommending that, your recommendation is to return this to Planning Commission for further consideration. There was also a valid protest petition submitted, so any action made by city council needs to be supported by a three-fourths vote.
So your recommendation is to send it back to the Planning Commission and state the reason for denial?
Correct.
Any councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Walters?
I'm just a little confused on it, because the, what we have here is that you're requesting a denial of the request, but you're saying you just want to send it back to the committee.
We have a ordinance strapped it up for denial, if that's the motion you end up making, but...
Yeah, another question. I think in reading through, it sounded like they could automatically, without our approval or disapproval, change it from TF-one to TF-two. Did I read that wrong?
With state statute, Planning Commission has the authority to approve a zone change to a lesser district. So since the applicant requested MF-four, Planning Commission could recommend two-family, single-family, zero-lot line, all the way down to SF, which wouldn't be a zone change, but they have that authority with state statute.
Okay, so the recommendation you're making is that we just, we take a motion, and we send it back to committee?
Correct.
And state the reason why it was denied?
I'd like to so move.
Do we have a motion to send it back to Planning Commission?
I still have a question here. I just, I'm just curious.
Well, we need to go with either a second or, if everybody wants to second it.
I'll second it.
All right, we have motion and second. Any questions? Councilman Crum?
Yeah, reading through it, it sounds like the neighbors are really against this and this location by a one-way street and stuff like that. I don't even know if we need to have the reason from them. I mean, is, do we also have the option to just go ahead and accept a denial and not send it back?
You do, for legal reasons, and for having a, Planning Commission should make state a reason for why they have denial. We have the golden rules, they are supposed to choose one of those items or find items for reasons for denial, and they did not state those in their motion.
If we do not, if we deny that, that doesn't affect us, if you know what I mean?
Well, if I may, the way that the law works is that there has to be a rationale for Planning Commission to make the decision. So because no rationale was made in the motion, there's no basis they're giving us, right, or you guys, to, you know, to make that decision. So best practice would be send it back to them and say, tell me why you're making that decision, so that it's right for you guys to review those reasons why they're making that decision when you guys make that, make that vote. And that's subject to the fact that, since the protest petition's been filed, for you to approve the zoning request and overrule planning, you'd require a three-quarters vote to do that. But just to send it back, you know, it's only a majority vote, to just send it back and have them reconsider.
So if we just denied it with no reason given by planning, they would have, the people that put in the petition would have an appeal process they would just automatically fall back to, or would that just...
It would be done with us, but if they filed a lawsuit in the district court, and the courts tried to review why, you know, that decision was made.
We did that one time. Remember that? Yep. We did that on planning one time.
Something we want to try and avoid.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, so we have motion and second to send it back to Planning Commission and state the reason why they denied it. Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Item Four, Noticees and Communications, a Governing Body Announcements. Councilmember Crum?
Stuff going on at the library. Fifteenth through the thirty-first, they have an activity going on called Ghost, Goblins, and Ghouls Hunt. I think that's just fun stuff going on in the library. Tomorrow will be the next Lego Club meeting at four o'clock. That's a popular event. The sixteenth, which of course is Thursday, they'll be doing the Parents' Teacher Storytime. They do that every Thursday, so again, that's at ten-thirty. Hazel Fall Festival is the seventeenth through the nineteenth. Then we've got the Parents' Teacher Storytime to get on the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Early in-person voting, general election voting will be available to do that at the library on the thirtieth from ten a.m. to six p.m. And on October thirty-first, you can also go vote in person from ten a.m. to six p.m. See if there's anything else on here. Library board meeting at seven on the thirtieth, and then at thirty-first, they mentioned that they'll be involved with the trick-or-treat on Main Street, and the quilters are still meeting in the community room on Monday and Thursday mornings. The knitting and crochet groups are still meeting on Tuesday afternoons. That's what's going on at the library.
All right, thank you. Any other governing body announcements? All right, I have a few. So the Senior Center announcements, Commodities, will be October fifteenth. Walk with Ease Class, starting October sixteenth. Wild Lights Outing at the Zoo, October twenty-second. October Dinner, October twenty-fourth. Dress up in your Halloween costume. Make sure you buy your tickets by this Friday, if you want to attend that dinner. Diabetes and Heart Health Presentation, October thirtieth, and Halloween Food Contest on October thirty-first. Several recurring events, line dancing, exercise classes, coffee and conversation, games, crafts, bingo, bunko, and Alzheimer's Support Group. The November fourth and fifth, there'll be somebody from the Kansas Office of Veteran Services. They'll be here on Tuesday and Wednesday, November fourth and fifth, from nine to four p.m. For two days, they'll be here at City Hall. So some of the resources that they have available, this is the free service. So they have VA healthcare enrollment, VA disability claim information filing, how to obtain your military records, such as your DD-two fourteen, act, act information, surviving spouse benefits and information, soldier homes and cemeteries, and state benefits, and much more. So we do have contact information, if you need more information, but they will be here on November fourth and fifth, from nine to four p.m. So, please spread the word if you like. November eleventh at eleven a.m. will be the Veterans Day Ceremony. That'll be at the Veterans Memorial by the library. And it's always a good, good time, lots of people go there, it's put on by the BFW. And, lest you know, I attended the Annual League of Kansas Municipalities Conference this last weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, three-day event. There were over three hundred and fifty city officials from around the state. Tended some workshops, a lot of things going on that weekend. So that's where local governments come together, government leaders come together, exchange ideas, explore best practices, and just get together and see what each other are doing, what, what other things are working in their cities. So while, while there, the Kansas Mayors Association also meets one day during the conference. And during the, during that meeting, I was elected as president of the Kansas Mayors Association. And also, not to toot bone or horn, but you know, just, it's just great to be involved with, with the league. So the League, League of Kansas Municipalities, we have a governing, governing body, it's a league governing body, so I was elected as vice president for the league governing body. We have fifteen directors, a president, and a vice president. So that'll be for the two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six years. And following year, it's, should move up to president after that, just a, it's a rotation type thing. Not rotation to be, but I mean, from VP to president, so. Anyway, means more meetings, so it's good. It's all good, all good stuff. All right, next we have some items in your packet. Cedric County Fire Department, Station Thirty-four, monthly report. Emails from Cox Communication. And next we have Economic Development Quarterly Report. Danielle? So earlier this evening, Danielle gave a report to WAMBO. So a lot of the mayors, councilmembers, county commissioners were there, so. Did a great job, and I appreciate the report you gave to WAMBO this afternoon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your package, you'll find the third quarter economic development report. I've added a table of content at the beginning of the report to make it easier to navigate. Not included in the report is an update on the CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Grant. SCED has submitted our first quarterly progress report to the Kansas Department of Commerce. We're currently working with ten homes on Cory and Maple, with funds available to add one more home potentially. Payments have been made for administration and the environmental review, and we're now processing payments for inspections, risk assessment, and rate on testing. Altogether, those ten homes have twenty-four residents that are benefiting from the program, including six female head of households and three persons with disabilities. Switching gears, I've also previously mentioned that the city has a membership of Placer. This tool provides privacy-protected analytics, showing how people move and shop, providing demographics, gaps, and other benchmarks. It helps guide business expansion decisions and provides data to potential businesses. It can also track data for city events, when attendance is high enough and location data is available. At the end of the report, I've included two Placer event overview reports for this quarter, including National Night Out and Independence Day Celebration at Rigs over the last four years. Event data provides attendance estimates and trends that help us to understand visitor demographics, traffic patterns, and engagement times, justify investments, and evaluate the impact of event dates, changes, and marketing strategies. So I thought you might enjoy seeing what that looks like. That is all I have for you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Crum?
On these reports, one thing I'd really like to look at are, are the grants. And I just kind of wanted to point out for people, since we've been really trying to hit the grants over the past three years, we've had a little bit over one point four million dollars in grants granted in the city, and I'm really excited about that. And I hope that's still an avenue we keep hitting hard on, because it's, and you're, we didn't, we haven't asked for as much this year as we have in the past, but your percentage is pretty darn good this year, about what we requested and what we've gotten, so. Thank you, thank you for working on those.
Well, it's not, it's definitely not just me, it's a citywide effort, but thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilman Walters?
Just a quick one. I noticed when you had question two rent owned, that there was like almost sixty percent, you know, which seems to be an indication of an increase in economic activity or availability. Is that indicative of the city as a whole, or?
On, on what, I'm sorry?
On one of your questions you asked, let's see, about a hundred and one people, whether they rent or own, and you had about sixty people who owned. And I was just wondering if that was indicative of what the pattern seems to be for the city, because we were more around fifty-fifty for a while there.
Yeah, and I think it's, I, I think it still is. I would honestly, I would have to look at, at analytics to give you a real answer on that. But this is just for those that apply for water accounts, so that, it does fluctuate from time to time through that, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Danielle. All right, next we have, let's see, Item Five, Old Business, none. Item Six, Other Businesses. A Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding with French University Regarding Economic Development Strategic Plan and Assessment. So a few months ago, I, I met the president at French University at the, I forgot the name of the program I was at now, the Global Leadership Summit, it was at Coke Arena. So, the Dr. Carey is the, is the president's name at French University. So I was talking to her, then she put me in, well, she put Rachel Steiner in contact with me from French University. And we started talking about, because she, she has this, I can't find the name of the word it's in. She's with the Director of Alumni Engagement and Annual... Anyway, so the, oh, so the, she's, she's the Director of the Center of Enterprise and Community Engagement. So talking to her, she has a group of students from different fields, whether it's business or just different fields. And so she likes to, she's trying to put together a team that will help out the city. So we asked her if she could do the economic development assessment. Last time it was done was two thousand and ten, so it's like fifteen years old. And showed her where it was, and she'd be happy to do it. She said that would be a great project for her, for the students to do at French University. She said that would be a great project for her, for the students to do at Friends University. So some of the graduate students, I think they're graduate.
That was gonna be a question. I don't know if they're undergraduate or graduate program.
I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't really, I know that she talked highly of them. And it's a, it's a project that she feels very confident that they can do. So she set out timelines and we looked over the timelines. So the way, so they will work with Danielle, be, I believe, weekly calls, weekly conversations at first until they get going. And then by April, they will present it to council, because they, they'll be graduating in May. So they'll present it to council in April for our approval. So I think it's a great thing. It gives them an opportunity to, to do some great work, to work with the city, to do something they may not have the opportunity to do otherwise, kind of like an internship. So I think it's a great opportunity for, for the city also, just to be able to work with the Friends University on something like this. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions or would you like to approve the memorandum? Councilwoman Crum.
I did see in the agreement that if they're here in town working on stuff and something happens, they'll be covered by our insurance. Did I read that correctly or was that something else?
I thought it was their, their commercial insurance.
I believe they are covered under their insurance.
Their insurance.
Yeah.
It does have in there, council member, that on page two, under insurance, the City of Hayesville agrees that students will be covered by the City of Hayesville's commercial general liability insurance while students are engaging in the activities with the City of Hayesville and on the City of Hayesville's property.
That's what I thought. Does we have that approved by our, I mean, do we have to have that approved, approved by the insurance ahead of time or, or do they just have to accept that because they're our insurance company and we put that in a, in a contract?
If there's a slip and fall on our facility, our insurance is going to cover that. We're going to make a claim for our insurance. So I think the only thing that this agreement would cover is if there's a fight between whether Friends covers a risk or, you know, the city would cover risks. So I think that it's just restating the fact that if they're on our premises, that our insurance would cover liability risk.
Okay. Thought I read that, I just wanted to check on it.
Yeah, because I read it as city, as C, it says insurance. University agrees that students will be covered by its commercial general liability insurance while students are engaged in activities with the City of Hayesville, including the city's property pursuant, pursuant to this MOU.
And that's also stated under the city's responsibilities, letter D, five D.
So is just kind of each other's, each group kind of covering for the other group, I guess, kind of just making sure that we know they're covered no matter what.
It's like conflicting deals.
You said four C and then five D are in conflict, yeah. I, I think, again, what will actually happen with that regard to whether the city and Friends agree one way or the other is if someone gets hurt on city property, our insurance is going to cover that claim. If someone gets hurt on Friends University property, it's going to be their insurance that covers that, that injury. I do agree that it needs to be revised though, so that both of those terms make sense, so.
Is this something we can approve tonight with that amendment to be made?
Yeah, sure.
There's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve the memorandum of, of understanding with Friends University with that conflict to be amended as soon as possible.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the memorandum as presented with corrections or additions. Josh, is it okay?
Yeah, just to clarify though, whether here in Hayesville, we're going to cover them, but if they're not here, then they're going to cover themselves. And I think that's what, on city property, right, I think that's what, okay.
All right, we have a motion on second. Any further discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next we have item B, consideration of historic district sidewalk improvements. Georgie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the October park board meeting, the committee discussed paving the gravel paths in the historic district. This proposal was presented to the historic committee earlier this year and they were in favor of it. A map is included in your packet of the sidewalk locations. This project is part of the parks master plan project priority list. It would be scheduled after January second, twenty twenty six, to avoid any conflicts with Christmas celebrations or any celebrations over there. I am requesting authorization for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand to Brad Murray Incorporated, which includes a contingency allowance for any unforeseen changes. You can try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Georgie? Councilperson pardon.
You know, sometimes when they, you put in cement sidewalks or they're raised a little bit from the ground, are these going to be level so that there's not trip hazards?
We, Tony, can you remind me how, what we were doing with that?
Yeah, so some of the sidewalk that borders Flower Bed or Garden, we're going to use the sidewalk edge to kind of clean up the Flower Bed edge. On the outside, where there's dirt or grass, they're gonna, the contractor is responsible for backfilling with the slope.
Okay.
To do that. And part of the thing to remember, this park does not drain nearly anywhere.
Right.
And there's no way to really get the whole entire vegetation of the park to the road where it does drain. So this does include some, bringing in some topsoil to try to raise some of the sidewalks. So, because we, when we walk this, you can see where water just stands.
Right.
So our goal is to try and get water off the walkway, but that may pull water off the walkway, if that makes sense. Just be aware, it's not going to be perfect.
I'm just concerned about it having trip hazards. I mean, worried about smooth, but don't put edges where they're going to trip either.
Part of this too, rock is, chat is ADA compliant, but obviously concrete is much more.
Much better, yeah.
So that was some of the conversation we had with the contractor too.
Okay. Yeah, with this, it does add a pathway over there to the parking lot next to the community building and concrete along that sidewalk, so people being able to park there will have easier access from that side, so.
Any other questions for Georgie? If not, would somebody like to make the motion? Councilwoman Crum.
I'll take a motion that we approve amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to Brad Murray Incorporated for installation of concrete sidewalk in the historic district as presented.
Second.
The motion on second to approve the bid for the sidewalk improvements as presented. Any further discussion? Question?
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next we have item C, consideration of agreement with Everfull regarding senior center mills program.
So exactly what the mayor stated, this is our annual agreement for our Mills on Wheels program at the senior center. The name of the company has changed, everything else is the same.
Any questions? Would you like to make a motion? Councilman Bennett.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement with Everfull Mills.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the agreement with Everfull for the senior center mill program. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item B, consideration of design agreement with P E C for assisted living facility infrastructure. Come in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We received, received a design agreement from P E C for the assisted living facility in River Forest Edition. The plans were originally about ninety percent complete in two, twenty twenty-three, when the developer put a project on hold. This agreement allows P E C to, to finish the water and the paving of the infrastructure for the project. Therefore, we are requesting approval of the design agreement with P E C in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred. Stand for any questions you may have.
Councilwoman Crum.
I make a motion, we approve the consideration of design agreement with P E C for the assisted living facility infrastructure as proposed, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the design agreement with P E C as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next we have item E, consideration of lakefield addition infrastructure bids.
So the bid letting was held for the lakefield addition infrastructure project, which is located at the northeast corner of Meridian and Seventy-Nine Street South. The project includes construction of public infrastructure to serve the new development. The engineers estimate was just under one point nine million. We are requesting approval of the best bid from Meese Construction in the amount of one million five hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Councilperson pardon.
There's no questions, I make a motion, we approve the bid from Meese Construction for one million five hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four bennies.
We have a motion on second to, to approve the lakefield addition infrastructure bids as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next we have item G, consideration of pool slide maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The blue slide at the Hayesville swimming pool is needing to be recoded. The interior of the blue slide has not been recoded since two thousand and seventeen. The slide will be repaired with a vinyl ester resin and covered with a gel coating. We look to complete this project this fall with cooler temperatures prior to the pool opening next year. After checking references, recommending contracting with safe slide restoration to recode the interior of the slide for twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. This will be paid out of Rigsel tax.
Councilman Walters.
I'm a little hesitant to ask, what would a new slide cost?
Rough guesstimate of seven hundred and fifty thousand two million.
Oh. Never mind. That's next. It's just a rough. I make a motion, we go ahead and approve this request.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the request for the sloop, for the pool slide maintenance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have item G, consideration of pool slide maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The blue slide at the Hayesville swimming pool is needing to be recoded. The interior of the blue slide has not been recoded since two thousand and seventeen. The slide will be repaired with a vinyl ester resin and covered with a gel coating. We look to complete this project this fall with cooler temperatures prior to the pool opening next year. After checking references, recommending contracting with safe slide restoration to recode the interior of the slide for twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. This will be paid out of Rigsel tax.
Councilman Walters.
I'm a little hesitant to ask, what would a new slide cost?
Rough guesstimate of seven hundred and fifty thousand two million.
Oh. Never mind. That's next. It's just a rough. I make a motion, we go ahead and approve this request.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the request for the sloop, for the pool slide maintenance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, item seven, department reports, A Administrative Services. Georgie.
It is that time of year for all the holidays, so we are accepting Halloween yard decorating contest entries. You can email those to Danielle. We will accept entries until October twentieth. You do have to be within city limits to enter the contest. Online voting will be October twenty-first through the twenty-eighth and winners will be announced on October thirtieth. And then Trick or Treat on Main Street is coming up on Friday, October thirty-first, four to six P M. Mayor will be at the Vickers Building handing out candy and hot dogs to everyone that comes by.
Bring your kids and drink it. All right, next we have city clerk, Angie.
I know.
Please, chief.
For Trick or Treat on Main Street, it may not be everybody that comes by, so make sure you get there early because eventually we're not going to be everywhere, so just keep that in mind. Our visiting officer this evening is Officer Caitlin Boar. She is currently assigned to the middle schools as a school resource officer, so say hi to her as you go by out there. She does a good job for us. Also, we have our DEA drug takeback that we'll be doing on October twenty-fifth from ten to two. Again, it'll be out in front of the police station as it has been the last few years. This is in addition to our drop off in the lobby, so if for some reason you can't make that date, there is always the drop off box in the lobby that you can go by and, and drop those off at any time. Lobby's open twenty-four hours a day. Also, just a reminder, we've talked about Halloween a couple times. Halloween is on a Friday this year. Thank goodness it is not a full moon. However, we just want to caution everybody to watch out for little ghosts and goblins running around town. They, they get all amped up on sugar and sometimes the adults get amped up on sugar too, so they may run around randomly and, and jump out in front of cars, stuff like that, so just be mindful of that, be careful. Also, make sure that you designate a driver if you're going to, for taking adult beverages of any kind. I want everybody to be safe and, and make it on the next year, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next we have Public Works, Tony.
Just to provide a little bit of update on Sarah Lane. I attempted to reach out, reach out and get a current update on the material. Have not obtained that yet, but the last update we had last week was the material should be finished this week with delivery expected next week. You may have noticed on Wednesday of last week, county mobilized to the site. They began by blocking the diversion at the floodway, so that's why the Coweskin Creek has no water in it. They then followed that up with tree removal and they have started an early excavation of the site. Last week, city staff performed the survey and the staking off the design plan by P E C. We are hopeful and we expect the structure construction to take six to eight weeks if weather cooperates and that'll be followed up with city staff backfilling and then the agenda item that you approved further, so thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next we have Recreation, Rob.
Good evening, again, our youth basketball registration deadline is this Friday, October seventeenth. Again, Fall Fest is this weekend, the seventeenth to the nineteenth at Rigs Park. Our annual Spooktacular celebration will be at the Activity Center on October twenty-sixth and then Gobblewobble on a five K race on November eighth. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rob. Next we have item eight, appointments. We have none. Item nine, executive session. A executive session for preliminary discussions regarding acquisition of real property not to exceed fifteen minutes. Councilwoman Crum.
I make a motion that we recess into executive session under K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six for a preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property to include the city attorney, chief administrative officer and public works director. The open meeting shall resume here in the council meeting room at eight nineteen.
Second.
The motion on second to go into the executive session as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next we have item G, consideration of pool slide maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The blue slide at the Hayesville swimming pool is needing to be recoded.
Any discussion? Question please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, we are back from executive session, the binding action was taken. Councilman Crum?
I move that, uh, we allow Chief Administrative Officer Will Black to bid up to four hundred thousand dollars on parcel number seven five five at the upcoming Sedgwick County tax foreclosure sale to be held on Tuesday, October twenty-first.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Well, Councilman, we're up. Uh, Crum just, uh, announced. Uh, any discussion? Question please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Next we have item ten, review of expenditures, A, summary of expenditures, uh, September expenditures. Councilperson Barton?
I make a motion, we receive and file the September expenditures.
Second.
We have a motion on second to receive and file the September expenditures. Any discussion? Question please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item eleven, the consent agenda. We have one item on there. Councilperson Barton?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on second to, uh, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, item twelve, council items. A, council concerns. Council have any concerns tonight? Nope, great. Alright, item B, council action request updates.
Uh, just a quick update on two forty-four North Jane. Uh, we also double-checked it today because it's been a while since it was reported. Uh, they are still in compliance, the grass is mowed, uh, case is considered closed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Tony. Next we have item thirteen, adjournment. Councilman Bennett?
I make a motion, we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn tonight's meeting? Alright, any discussion? Question please?
Rooster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yeah.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.